I have a good answer for you.
That's the situation that I have and I think Molly probably concurs that sometimes we, it seems like we almost make these situations for ourselves where it's a do now or die. And I'd like to see in the future things are impacted a little earlier.
No, I didn't say it was a do now or die thing. I didn't explain to you what we could incur, incur if we let it go up.
We will make an effort.
Okay.
Yeah, do this.
It's a good point.
Yeah, we'll make that effort. And to get it up here in a timely fashion. And I could speak to the purchase of that. I was involved in that and it was a very powerful machine at the time. And at the time, it was the biggest motor we could get. And it was paid for fully by a grant, by the Clean Air.
Yeah.
It was a lot of work. That's when he managed Curtis Hall in the city of Wyoming, they were interning here. And there was a lot of people involved in getting this. That machine is, I would hate to count how many times the fan in the house has been overhauled or replaced.
It actually got rebuilt that one time before, while you were here. They rebuilt the whole fan out there.
Fan and the whole bit. And that is a very, very abrasive process. Process of, we would be lucky to get a year and a half out of the fan. It was gravel and grit and it's not tough, but it's literally where holes are made. So, that's, having said that.
It's not, to be honest with you, it's something that probably dropped off my radar until I looked a little bit ahead and said, oh, leaf vacuuming is coming up. Because, you know, it just got, the budget just got approved in July. And this is really the only thing from the Motor Pool budget that we're going with this year. And, you know what, as busy as myself and my staff have been this year, it's just probably my fault and that I'm late getting it to you. You know, we do the best we can and we're all human, but sometimes it works out this way.
Any further discussion?
Just one quick, Mr. Mayor. No, you said it was with a grant for the Clean Air Act?
Yes.
And now this one isn't gonna need the Clean Air Act?
Nope.
So what was it replacing? Is it like Kohlhower?
Oh, we banned that motor on there. That's ninety-nine horsepower diesel.
Was that, maybe it was Marty Stevens?
That, that was back when they passed the ordinance not to burn town any years.
Oh.
I'm thinking of where we banned all burning. At that time, you couldn't drive down the street at night or else having your fog light on, you still couldn't see nothing. And we banned all burning of leaves and we opted to bag the leaves.
So, my apologies, but it's something we, something we really need and...
Thank you for hearing me. I just wanted to dedicate this to you.
We have a motion on the table and seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Miami, if you want to call, 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 call. Mrs. Carmine?
Yes.
Mr. Trueson?
Yes.
Yes, Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
With all due haste, most curious.
Thank you. I'll call them tomorrow.
Hopefully they have one.
Also.
Moving on to item C, discussion regarding the community building development team's letter to the city council requesting, excuse me, a community use zoning district into the planning condition to begin that process. In our workshop tonight, we had a lot of discussion on that. And we directed the city manager and the city attorney to work on that for our next one. Mr. Powell, will you speak to that?
Yeah, that was actually the next item on the agenda.
Yes, also.
This is, well, planning on doing that discussion about a PUD, the planning permission, is that, you know, it makes sense to do it. It was just a timing issue for, to make sure that the community building development team to get their projects on a timely action. So, we're looking at doing it as part of our master plan update and getting that in there. And we're going through that process. Because it is a timely process, because when you draft the new ordinance, because there's so many other ordinance intertwined in that zoning, that's where it really gets complicated and time, and timely on the attorneys of heart. So, we couldn't get it in quick enough to meet the timelines for community building development teams. So, we've got a different option. So, we're gonna work on this as part of our planning, uh, master plan update. So, that's how we're gonna handle item C.
And for the sake of the community, that is making a new community use zoning district. And the timing would probably be six to eight months. So, that's, we'll move that into the master plan process and plan. Any other discussions on that? Moving on to lack of support that we see in the cuts of discussion. Item number D regarding the community building development team's letter on case allowing municipals to proceed on public programs without following their own ordinances. Mr. Taylor, will you speak to that? And we did discuss that with our legal counsel.
For our shop.
In the workshop, the, so, what appears to be the best way to go right now is to have the city attorney and the planning consultant work on a PUD as well as rezoning of the industrial zone portion of the city's property. It will be free to allow all the projects. We'll also have to communicate with, to community building development team that that property on the west side of the trail that they are going to get donated sometime next year, that they would probably be best served if they could feel a letter from the property owner saying that they would wish to have whatever portion rezoned to be free. So, then we have all of it done with at one time. And that's, that was one of the things that I've been discussing over the past couple of months with the community building.
The time of the planning appear in heat, which I said yes, but I would assume they will be sending a letter for it. She's here.
But actually, I think with some of the money being donated, it's a different type of performance. So, we should hopefully...
Just, just so that, for people who weren't here and people watching on YouTube that aren't able to hear with the attorney's side, the attorney is going to work with Carmine, our city planner, Doc, our attorney, is going to work with Carmine, our city planner, and our city manager. And it's going to create a structure that will allow, with the combination of changing zoning and then going to planning permission to have it fit within zoning, or if it doesn't, going to the ZDA to expedite this process. It'll be coming back at our special meeting on the nineteenth to have, the attorney, no, the attorney will, he's saying with, um, to give discussion, we won't be voting, to give discussion on what that looks like as far as what's going with planning permission. Because he's going to draft the language for that PUD to get it, to get it expedited. So, the attorney and the city planner and the city manager are going to expedite that PUD language. It should be in front of us with the discussion item on the nineteenth, so we can vote on it in November.
That, actually, the special meeting was for the planning permission.
Oh, I thought, oh.
No, we don't. It's no.
Even better. Okay. These could have gone before that and should discuss it. Even better.
People think, we're moving. Any other discussion on item D? Hearing one? Moving on to item E. This is my motion to waive policy number twelve to approve a Veterans' Day as a working holiday for city staff as first consideration. Are we going to entertain a motion for that? Waive policy number twelve.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive policy number twelve to approve Veterans' Day as a working holiday for city staff.
Second. Mr. Clark, moving second. Any other questions? Security none. All those in favor of waiving policy number four? For working day, uh, working Veterans' Holiday, given by the county.
I...
Although opposed, signed no. Okay. Number one, a motion to approve setting November eleventh, twenty fifteen, as a working holiday for city staff. For special purpose, are we entertaining a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve November eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, as a working holiday for city staff.
Is there support?
Support.
Who's supporting that? Mr. Clark. Discussion now. Mr. Taylor, will you speak to that?
Basically, what's gonna happen, staff will be working that day. The only difference is city hall would not be open to the public. During that day, staff will then be going through the various records that they're responsible for and purging those that are allowed to be purged per our retention schedule. And so, we go through any records we might have in our offices, but more importantly, we go upstairs into the archives and go through those boxes and see which ones can be purged. So, we try to do that, as Linda noted, that it was about two years ago we did it, now it's time to do it again. So, I would recommend that council authorize the city hall to be closed on Veterans' Day and have staff enjoy what we call a working holiday and work on record retention.
Any other discussion? We either took this on the workshop. Hearing none, the roll call award. Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Trueson?
Yes.
Mrs. Carmine?
Yes.
And Mayor, all those yes, motion carried. Moving on, in this session, we are at item Gendre, the city manager's report.
First thing is I was able to get ahold of Dr. Lou Gendre, whose council has agreed to contract with the, with council and staff on a strategic planning process. He does have March eleventh and twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and April first and second, two thousand and sixteen, available for the process.
What days for those?
The eleventh and twelfth of March and April one and two, as was available this year.
What, what days?
There is, you have Friday and Saturday.
Okay.
Friday evening, Saturday morning. Um, so, he's...
March one is not gonna work for me.
And if council's ready tonight, I can, you know, pay their preferences. If not, just send me an email or give me a call. But if he's holding them, I'll go and I'll get back to him as soon as I can. I think these are good dates to do our strategic planning because it would be working in concert with staff's development of the proposed budget. So, if there was any goals, visions that the council had that required a financial commitment, we're gonna work it into the budget.
No question. When you say Friday night and Saturday morning, what times specifically?
We're talking early evening, six o'clock maybe, by six o'clock. Last for several hours and then come back in the morning, probably eight, nine o'clock in the morning on Saturday. Okay, and that would be March eleventh and twelfth and April one and two. So, if council, either, I'll leave an immediate answer tonight. If you could check your schedules, check with your families.
I have friends that turn it to March, so that I find a little Saturdays.
Okay. And then just send me an email or give me a call, one and two.
April, is that, where is Easter in that?
Oh.
Is that, I don't, like, I don't have my new January in my thing. Easter is actually March twenty-seventh.
Oh.
So, is that, that's pretty great.
What I was assuming. Yep, is the April after Friday and the Saturday?
Yes, both of mine. That's, that's the way he sets them off, is a Friday evening, Saturday morning.
Well, that's been great.
Yeah.
If Mar, if Easter's the twenty-seventh?
Then April would be the date, so that'd be the last.
Well, that's me.
I'm flexible.
I can tell.
Unflexible.
I'm open to either.
I agree with you.
I go with the one.
Saturday.
But I have, I have friends that turn it every Saturday.
So, it's not like at this time, April may be the best bet? Is everyone else open?
Sounds like April's the day.
April, April's good.
April's gonna be...
April's it.
Okay, all right. I'll note that.
Hold on. Saturday.
Second thing is, the chair's having to do the bid process. Now, good news is we'll be paying three of the current deputies for next year. The three we're retaining are Jason Van Dyke, Mike Canis, and Chad Tucker. And we have a new deputy coming in for the night shift. He will be replacing Mike Stall, who was one of our former officers. And Mike has now taken a different assignment that for a couple of different reasons. Number one, it significantly reduces his commute. And number two, gives him exposure to a different, some different communities. So, I think it's a really good opportunity for him. The next mission, Municipal League, as I reported out of the workshop, I liked that conference or convention in Traverse City was, it was truly outstanding. And I liked the fact that they incorporated some new things, specifically their mobile workshop, we got out of the community and it started, instead of talking theories, you could see it firsthand on projects and how it was applied. I also like the venues that they chose. As an example, our closing session was at the State Theater in, right downtown in Traverse City. And one of the workshops was at the Beview Theater, which is on the waterfront. But they also had biking tours of the, of the city to show the complete streets and the addition of bike lanes and how that affects the community. So, all, time well spent and I would encourage any council member in the future that can make time to attend one. I think you will find it very valuable. West Street Extension, as council is aware, I did a very preliminary grant request to the West Michigan Regional Planning Commission Board. It was approved by their subcommittee and recently approved by the board as a poll. So, that next step, I have to work with the executive director to put together a more detailed application. And then we would meet with the regional EDA director and go over that. And as I told, the planning permission is gonna be pulled home week because the EDA director was formerly the economic development director, now Kena, right now from over here. So, it'll be nice to see him again. The master plan process will be starting next month. The planning permission will develop a letter that we'll send out to various organizations in the community with specific invitation for them to attend. We'll also put it on the website and get the story in the polls. Try to get as many people as we can to come in and offer some input. There has been some expressed interest in considering eliminating smoking in the downtown area on our city sidewalks. Check with the city attorney. That is possible, that we can carve that out. It could be an enforcement issue, but if council is wishing, I can work with the city attorney and bring a draft ordinance for your review and consideration.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
What's your thought on enforcement?
This is, this is the first I've heard of it. Obviously, any, any ordinance like that, as a city manager, there is some enforcement issue. It's, to some degree, is doable. It's, to remember, we have one, got the patrol in the city of Cedar Springs. You know, oftentimes, some of the smaller ordinances that people are fanatical about end up being the source of a big complaint to us, where we just really don't have the resources to enforce every, every rule of law. So, I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm just saying, you'll be able to afford learning that it couldn't be of the number one priority.
Of course. But does it sound like it would just make you wanna rip your hair out?
It could be, you know, I can do some research on it to find out what other cities have with that ordinance. Do I just, I really don't have enough knowledge to educate them. Along with Sergeant Kelly, it could be an enforcement issue.
Right.
And certainly would not propose an ordinance if we thought it was gonna be overly difficult to enforce. But it would be much similar to the three hour parking. We do the best we can. This might help, you know, garner some voluntary compliance if people know that there is an ordinance there and control some of it. Our only other option is to go and talk to certain locations in the downtown and ask for voluntary compliance. It may or may not work.
Right.
And with the ordinance, that's fortunate for us, is deputies have discretion. So, ordinance, you see ordinance and law violations daily, that, you know, the spirit of the law, the law, the difference. So, you know, a hundred percent mandatory compliance is impossible under any kind of law. But it does give a discretionary work. You had a certain location where the people congregating and smoking, that certainly gives us. So, with our mission.
If council wants that, I can work with Sergeant Kelly to look at, you know, what other, what options are out there, how other committees are dealing with it, and report back in another manager's report.
Yeah, I, I love the idea of not having smoking. I just don't wanna make something that makes our police officers crazy trying to make it happen.
No, that would, we could work through that.
I guess, you know, I don't wanna go on a knee jerk reaction, you know, to this. And then have it turn into a real alibi. To try to enforce it and then all of it above. So, I mean, if you could get, to you, get some information and bring it back to the future. Thank you.
Finally, I will be on vacation October nineteenth to suburbia. During my absence, and just to make it clear, we're going in different directions for different reasons. During my absence, Linda will be the acting city manager. As I nor, as I normally do, I'll be available by email and also cell phone. And I do monitor the email on a daily basis. So, I can be timed up if anyone needs it. For the sake of brevity, I'm not gonna ask the other departments to make a report unless council has something specific that they would like to feature. If not, that's the end of the report.
Any questions or any reports? You have Mr. Powell or Mr. Clark, do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Mr. Clark?
I would like to ask Sergeant Kelly to talk things about Red Plan Eighteen and...
Overall, great. Yep, we had fifty-three volunteer man-hours, unpaid deputies, and then, actually, I don't have the total yet for the paid deputies. But things went smooth. There's a couple of things that we'll make improvements on next year, but overall, we received good reviews from the people that told us that anyways, so.
Props to your officer that agreed to ride on the senior's float to be their theme.
Yep, yep. That would case me in.
So, you could ride on the senior's float. That was fabulous.
And this was so up for you guys, it was wonderful. I hope you and your department appreciated the welcome from Red Plan Eighteen in our city.
Yes. Yeah, people commented on it. And we had guys working at the Bureau Center that commented on, on the welcome they got there. So, it was, it was appreciated. Just a few issues, which is normal, you know, if you have any people in town, you're gonna have some issues.
Just a reminder that deputy that was on the float is actually, does work here in Cedar Springs.
Yeah, yeah. He was volunteering.
I know that. That shows the level of commitment they have to the community.
They did. Nice to see. Deputy Tiness, I authorized him to ride on a float, he's a senior as well, and he chose to stay and take calls, which I was good with that too, so.
You know, everything went well, all the departments and everything, I guess. It would be nice if there was any issues that we need to address in the future, if everybody could come together and, you know, put them on the list and we can work these things out and, you know, and if ever, I thought, I drove through the parade, I had to drive a car. We took third place, not copper. The white, I didn't...
Your, your wife and grandchildren.
Yes.
They were adorable.
And it was great, you know, everybody, you know, the police department, fire department, police works. Everything went smooth. The only glitch that I see, you know, is that some of the council members could go to city hall.
Yeah. I was at city hall from one thirty until quarter to five.
Anyway, you know, from what I understand, that was, that was very helpful.
It was, yep. And deputies appreciate that as well.
Next year, we'll have a better rock.
And when I know I'm not coming early, there will be chili.
Oh, better, yeah.
So, I need chili. And then I had to get there an hour early and I couldn't get my crock pot.
There was hummus and crackers.
There was hummus and crackers. And the festival...
And pizza.
And the festival had donuts and cider and that spattle. So, next year, I will have the chili here in the morning.
Any other questions? Any other departments report?
I have a question for Marty. Do we have any kind of staff's update on Model A?
Yeah, the motor's setting and Mark Scriptko's arrived.
Is this an improvement in the situation?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it is. It's...
I went up and talked to Carl Frum some of weeks ago, and he told me that they had
bought the building at Cohen and Northland, Gracheski's old secret heating and cooling building. And they were moving their body repair, paint slash restoration part of the business to that location. Model A went up there. Mr. Scriptko has stepped forward to go through the engine and do whatever it needs. And they're working on it. The volunteers are working on it in their leisure.
Sure.
There was a comment made by a couple of individuals that they thought it was taking an excessive amount of time to do this. And I will give you that, it has been three years, going, well, four years now, because it's after Red Plan Eighteen. I'm, for one, for lack of knowledge, how to motivate a person to do volunteer work when he can do another job, his regular job, for pay. I have yet, and I'd never be a professional coach, because I don't know how to motivate a fourteen million dollar player. Now, if you're gonna volunteer to do something for me, it's gonna be in your leisure. Rest assured, the Model A will get done. She will not be put on a pedestal and set aside, unopened, for nobody can see it. It will be used as a showpiece and it will be used in parades. However, I have an issue, and I'm probably gonna step on a couple toes, but I have an issue with sticking that amount of money in something that that's old and been part of the community for this many years. The use abused. I would like to put her on a pedestal, not necessarily in a flower box, and be proud of her and, and honor her as a piece of Cedar Springs Fire Department community. I think she needs some recognition because she's served the community well for a lot of years. And part of our goal when we did that restoration fundraiser was to put it back to as close to original as we could get it and show it off at different communities with pride.
Having, you know, volunteers, I'm, but Mark knows and I'm sure he could, I guess, certainly really will help him without knowing that he was just coming over.
Well, Mr. Scriptko is into racing. He has a racing career. He's raced everything, but I think a ten street swim, and he may have did that when he was in school.
Oh, yeah.
But racing season is over, so he will...
I'll say to her, baby, why you talking?
There, he bites your tongue.
Okay.
Anything else from the fire department? Real quick, I'm just gonna add, real quick, with Tom, he's talking about his emission things on his leak starter. We run into that with our engine in two thousand and nine. It was the first year they come out with this, you have to have this. And it was, it was a thirty to forty thousand dollar addition to that cost of that truck. So, Mr. Strusman is right on with that leak lower.
Yes.
It took a while for that to trickle down to non-motorized vehicles, but eventually your lawnmowers will have something on it.
They're talking also, you're outside woodbowers.
My outside?
Wood, woodbirds. Woodbowers. Yeah. They're starting to plant down on them. So, any other questions so far? Great. We're at this stage of the council comment, and it starts with Mr. Clark. I'll just repeat that Cherry Street looks great. I wish my speed on Grand Park was good.
I wish my speed on the ramp was good. Mrs. Powell?
I just have to thank the community of Cedar Springs for supporting me and sending me to the N M L conference. And I learned a lot of things. And one of them was from developers that said, and then we just, as we discussed it tonight, when I come into a community, I want a concrete action list. Tell me what I have to do and I will do it. I can't come into a community with a development where nobody knows what to do next. And there were some developers that were doing some big money projects up there in Traverse City. And they were great people. Um, I believe now that we have turned this community into an R D A community, which stands for relentless positive act. And I see that more and more all the time here. Also, I'm not an artist, but I appreciate art. Thank Jerry for supporting our artwork of our endorsement. We get our posters back. Um, art and culture, which in whose festivals brings six hundred billion dollars, I don't know if it's the state of Michigan or the whole country. That's a lot of money, let's support art and culture. Um, I also saw in Traverse City the pedestrian friendly environment, which we've all discussed, we all want. How we're gonna proceed with that living on a big, huge street like this? I don't know, but I'm open to any suggestions, Perry and I. Any other community people who stand on that sidewalk day after day are just terrified. And, um, uh, and also for us to always think about Cedar Springs, think about us as the nucleus, and think about us as beyond our municipal boundaries. We're all in this together. And thank you again.
Mrs. Carter?
Um, I just would like to say that I think the festival went amazing and that is in no small part to the fabulous people in this room. And the police were incredible and the fire department and Marty, and they were out there closing down the parking lot, press Legion, and, um, taking care of all the, the barricades and things. And Joe and, and, uh, Al were out there moving stuff around. And even when it started to pour down rain, you just smiled and said, we got this. And I was here at city hall from one thirty until quarter to five. And so I saw what you all were doing and it was amazing. And you made us all look really good. And I'm very grateful for that. And I just, I'm glad that the city hall opened. It's been a long time since the city hall can open on Red Flannel, and I think it's huge. A lot of people came in to use the potty and lost children crying. And here, happy donut, always find your mom. So that was very helpful. And I'm just really grateful that it's coming together in that way and that our employees made our city look so good.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Got to see a lot of people this last weekend that I hadn't seen since last year this weekend. It was nice to see some of them again. Looking forward to seeing what Bob Cowan and the cast of the movie for the second half of this year.
I've got it on, right on.
This can hear you.
I've got my hearing aid on, I've heard everything tonight. And I've, and I've liked what I heard, but it's way past my bedtime. Well, it's bad.
So next month is elections, vote like you like, depends on it, because it does. Um, last year, I was running out of polls, but things change in the heartbeat. So if I'm not here next month, well, it's the real folks. That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, I'll keep it brief, you know, thank all the employees here about that and the hospital, nothing will happen. We, we pull this off real well, just look at what we need to fix. Hopefully, there's not much that we do need to fix for future events. And, uh, let's move forward. And like I always said, there's no I in team and we all move together. And Mr. Allen, you really, you understand how much appreciated that this project you have done for our community that you've done. And this is only the beginning of greatness that I would expect of you. And I know it's there. So thank you very much. And with that note, I would thank everybody for being here tonight, big thanks. And I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those present, being silent, saying aye?
Aye.